Okay, we will recall to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Tuesday, January 18th, 2022. I could ask that you all please rise for a brief invocation to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, as we meet in a very troubling period of time in our world with the COVID epidemic and all the issues that face us on the international stage, we are ever thankful that we live in a town where we all come together and we all understand each other and we all take great pride in things that are accomplished in our community. And tonight, we are here to honor our Batavia varsity football team, who this year really did a marvelous job of playing their game and winning their games and making Batavia a town very proud of them. And so, we are thankful for those young gentlemen and wish them very, very best in their careers going forward. They are a model example of what Batavia can produce as far as young people, and we are ever so thankful to be able to call them our own. Tonight, as always, we want to remember those from our community who are serving on foreign soil in defense of the liberties of the United States of America, and we just ask that a special blessing be showered on each one of these men and women and those from our country serving with them as they go about their vital missions. Tonight also, we just ask for vision and understanding and compassion and willingness to work together as we commit ourselves to this meeting and make the decisions that are before us. And we just finally ask for blessing upon our community and all those who are inflicted with COVID or any other disease, that a special blessing be showered upon them and that health and return to normal is in store for those lives in our community who are now afflicted. We ask for all these blessings. Amen. Alderman Rizzato, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as our own.
I'll start from the beginning. Miller.
Here.
Rizzato.
Here.
Beck.
Here.
Connolly.
Here.
Chanzet.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Sulfah.
Here.
Barron.
Here.
Lehman.
Here.
Ayazi.
Here.
Malay.
Here.
Uer.
Here.
Saron.
Here.
Vogelsinger.
Here.
Second call, Malay. 12 of 14.
Okay, we do have the quorum to conduct business. Okay, kind of ironically, their fourth item on our agenda is reminder for everybody to speak in the microphone so BATV can hear the recording.
That hurts.
Okay, item five, items removed, added, or changed on tonight's agenda. Do we have anything? Doesn't sound like it. Okay, item six is presentation of the consent agenda. Alderman Chanzet, are you out there to do this?
I am indeed. Now, the consent agenda reads as follows: To accept and place on file the committee of the whole minutes for October 12th and October 19th, 2021, the monthly building reports for December 2021. Approvals: January 7th, 2022 payroll in the amount of $1,014,313.73. The accounts payable check register in the amount of $4,110,864.84. Approval: Cowal executive session minutes for October 5th and October 21st, 2021. Resolution 22-01-R authorizing execution of a contract for the 2021 City Hall Fire Main Project with Automatic Fire Systems, Inc., for an amount not to exceed $17,980. Resolution 22-04-R accepting a plan dedicating a portion of Wintergreen Terrace. Resolution 22-05-R acceptance of public water main system and authorize city engineer to reduce letter of credit for public improvements at 1850 East Fabian Drive. Resolution 22-06-R authorizing the city administrator to apply for Kane County Development Funds and execution of all necessary documents. Resolution 22-07-R authorizing a contract with QP Testing to perform testing for the 38 KB bushings at the northeast distribution substation for an amount not to exceed $22,842. Resolution 22-08-R authorizing a contract with Carlisle Utility to perform 35 KB underground facilities at 1789 Hubbard Avenue for an amount not to exceed $188,062, which includes a 10% contingency amount. And Resolution 22-09-R authorizing a contract for conduit construction to perform windmill cove directional boring and cable replacement for an amount not to exceed $1,103,420, which includes a 10% contingency amount. Now, I would move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second. Moved by Alderman Chanzet, second by Alderman Sulfah for the approval of the consent agendas presented. Any discussion? Kirk, please call the roll.
Chanzet.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Saron.
Aye.
Vogelsinger.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rizzato.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Connolly.
Aye.
13, ayes, no nays, one absent.
Motion's approved, 13 yes, no nos, one absent. All right, moving to item seven, matters from the public for items not on the agenda. Do we have anybody this evening? Okay, moving then to item eight, which is public hearing, which was scheduled for 7:35, and I'm told as long as I'm after that time, I'm okay. So, we're establishing a special service area number 68 for the Avenue Marketplace and Raising Canes. Who has this one? Alderman, Wolf, do you have it?
I do, Your Honor. This is the public hearing for the special service area 68 for Avenue Marketplace and Raising Canes that will be coming up under ordinance 22-01. Basically, this is all the backup special service area for that development.
Okay. Do we have anybody that wants to say anything? All right, then, do you want to make a motion to close the hearing?
Then I will make a motion to close the public hearing for special service area 68 for Avenue Marketplace and Raising Canes.
Second. Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Sulfah for to conclude the public hearing for the special service area number 68 for Avenue Marketplace and Raising Canes. Kirk, call the roll.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Saron.
Aye.
Saron.
Aye.
Thank you. Vogelsinger.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rizzato.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Connolly.
Aye.
Chanzet.
Aye.
13, yes, no nos, one absent.
Motion's approved, 13, yes, no nos, one absent. There was no motion, but we are adjourned in the public hearing. Moving to nine, which is public hearing again scheduled for 7:35, establishing a special service area number 42 for the Nago Industrial Park, PUD, Nago Farmstead 3. Alderman, Wolf, do you have this?
Yes, I do, Your Honor. Thank you. This is the special service area that is in ordinance 22-02, will be coming up on the agenda later. This one has been back before us a couple different times, and now this is the finalized version of this that will go through on the backup special service area for 42. Is there anybody that has any comments on this online or anything?
Any questions on public hearing on the Nago Industrial Park Farmstead? Entertained a motion to adjourn, or adjourn the public hearing?
I'll make that motion to adjourn the public hearing on special service area number 42.
Second. Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Connolly for the adjournment of special hearing on Nago Industrial Park Farmstead. Kirk, call the roll.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Saron.
Aye.
Vogelsinger.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rizzato.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Connolly.
Aye.
Chanzet.
Aye.
13, yes, no nos, one absent.
Somebody hit me here with something.
[Laughter]. Richmond's in retrograde, right? I know. Oh, my goodness.
This is a bad night for technology.
Exactly. I agree, Mayor.
Classic TikTok.
I didn't even touch a thing. Okay, now for the nice part of the meeting.
Yes.
We are very honored tonight to have members of the Batavia varsity football team from 2021 in the audience. I know they're not all here. We do have copies of the proclamation that the city council's about to pass that we will give to Coach Perron, and he can distribute to those who aren't here. Alderman Wolf, who all of you know is kind of the voice of the Batavia Bulldogs on BATV when it's allowed to be played, is going to join me up at the podium when we get through with the little comments where I'm going to make here. And then, we were going to give each one of you who's here, we got a proclamation with your name on it. So, I just want to tell a little story about what's going on here, because this is a very unique kind of moment in Batavia history. I just want to tell you how I'm able to tell you this story. In 1962, John Gusterson, who lived in the farm that was right to the east of where Batavia High School is today on Main Street, had a huge greenhouse garden there. And he was a bachelor, and he lived with his brothers and sisters on that location. And in 1962, he wrote the first history book of Batavia, and this is what the book was. It was 127 pages, and he published this. So, and that was in 62. 16 years later, I was then a newspaper reporter for a newspaper that doesn't exist anymore in Batavia. And one day, Mr. Gusterson called me, and he says, "I'm sick, I can't do this anymore, but the Historic Batavia Book needs to be updated from 62 to..." At the end of the day, it was 80 when we got it done, but he says, "I'd like to ask you to write the update." So, I was honored, and I took it. And so, in 1980, we published this book called Historic Batavia, which on the cover has the picture of the Saturday Evening Post cover that was somewhat historically famous in Batavia because it was on the nationwide distribution of the Saturday Evening Post. So, to get this book written, I had to go to the Gusterson's house many hours for about a two-year period and meet with Mr. Gusterson and his brothers and sisters, who were all out there. And so, I learned a lot more about Batavia history than I knew before, but so then I was able to write the book. But one, I was out there one day, Dr. or John Gusterson's sister, who was Dr. Lucille Gusterson, who was one of the true founders of Wabatzi Community College, proceeds to tell me a story about what happened in 1916 and 17 when she was then attending Batavia High School. And so, it seems that there was a football game played that year in the fall of 1916 over at Proviso High School in Maywood, which all of you know is quite a legendary sports school like Batavia. And at the end of the game, the game, I guess, was tied for most of the game, and then near the end of the game, Proviso scored a touchdown, but then they got two more touchdowns, what is described in the high school yearbook as flukes. And needless to say, this was highly controversial, a lot of comments in the region, a lot of people talked about, "How did Batavia High School get beat by two flukes in 2016?" So, they put this in the book the next year when they published the high school yearbook. And Batavia high school yearbooks have been published starting in 1912, which was the year we won the state basketball championship, and they were published through 1917, and then World War I broke out. And so, then there wasn't another high school yearbook published until 1945. So, there was a big void there. But in the 17 yearbook, which was the one that was published, they published a special section about athletics. And on the cover of that special section, they have a picture or drawing that was done by one of the guys on the football team by the name of Swanson, in which they show a Batavia high school football player carrying the ball with some opponent tackling him. And underneath it, just according to Lucille Gusterson, they had a line that said, "Batavia High School Football. We're always proud and always on top of the game." Well, I guess the school board at the time and the school administration had a little conversation about this line underneath there, it's about always being on the top of the game, and so, they thought it was good if they just took that out. So, this was removed from this. So, that's kind of the story that went on, but to get this thing done, there was a then class of students who would come into Batavia High School that year because it used to be that the yearbook was always made a year after the school year was over with. So, I gave Coach Perron a copy of all this material, and he's going to, I think, make copies of it and give it to you guys on the team. But in this class that made this up and came up with this drawing and everything else, there's some very interesting people in this class. This may be one of the most interesting Batavia high school graduating classes we've ever had, and I'm just going to talk about four of them. One of them at the back of the picture is a guy by the name of Johnny Maurer, and he's right here, and he was a basketball player, and he was very good at basketball to the degree that I believe he went to the University of Illinois, graduated, and became the coach at the University of Kentucky Basketball Program. He then left there and went to West Point Military Academy in New York, where he was the basketball coach of that school. So, he was pretty prominent in sports history in the area for what he did. Also in this picture is a girl by the name of Beth Segrand, whose father that year in 1916 had gotten, was part of a group that got Woodrow Wilson to declare June 14th as American Flag Day. And so, we now in this, also in this class, we have the daughter of the guy who's credited with helping create American Flag Day. Then also in the class is Lucille Gusterson, who's the one that told me this story. And Lucille Gusterson's claim to fame was is that she was a college history teacher over in Ohio for a number of years. She came back to Batavia in the mid-1960s and immediately jumped into the idea of creating a community college. And lo and behold, she went out and gave 265 individual speeches to rotaries and churches and everything in the area, which led to the creation of the Wabatzi Community College. So, she gets credit for being one of the driving forces of that. And then finally, standing next to her is a girl by the name of Marion Moon. And Marion Moon's father was the minister of the Methodist Church up on Batavia Avenue from 1915 to 1918. And Marion Moon's son is pictured on the back wall of the city council chambers there. The guy that's standing on the moon, that's Edwin Aldrin, and his mother was Marion Moon. And so, we've got some really famous people in this, involved in this little party here about putting this football player on the front of the athletic section of the yearbook. So, I share that with you before I read the proclamation, so you can kind of know where I got the idea. So, the proclamation, which I'm going to read and then ask the city council to approve, reads, "City of Batavia proclamation. Whereas the mayor and the members of the Batavia City Council by the passage of this official proclamation wish to express our admiration and pride in the outstanding record of accomplishment attained by the 2021 Batavia senior high school football team. And whereas the intense physical fitness, strong attitude toward daily practices, willingness to undertake serious studies of each and every challenging team, and display of true dedication on the field to the best that each player could be were all traits of a high-quality athletic performance that set the Batavia Bulldogs in a class of excellence that allows the team to earn the football conference championship in 2021. And whereas, as a community of fans, Batavians were sincerely proud to cheer and show their emotions of encouragement at each and every game of the 2021 season, and realize that the zest and sentiments of success that were experienced by this team during every conference game is a moment of great community pride. And whereas, much of the appreciation and needs, much appreciation needs to be given to the coaching staff of the 2021 Bulldogs under the legendary direction of Coach Dennis Perron, who carefully watched over and guided the football squad to win, win after win over opponents faced on playing fields of Illinois. And whereas, while the season ended in a highly controversial game filled with questionable calls made by umpires, the team is thanked and commended for their professional performance in facing this contest of dismay and handling themselves in a faithful commitment of fellowship and goodwill under most trying game circumstances. Now, therefore, we conclude this proclamation of honor and admiration by featuring the hand-sketched drawing below, taken from the 1917 Batavia high school yearbook, where their football season ended in identical circumstances as happened in 2021. The drawing was published to illustrate that despite what negative situations occur during a football game, Batavia football players, given their talents, attitudes, and commitment towards sportsmanship, always end up at the top over their opponents. This legacy carries forth today 105 years later, after it was first illustrated in the 1917 yearbook. So, I thought it would be nice for every member of this team to have a copy of the drawing that was done in 1917, when some of your predecessors went through the, almost the exact same experience." So, Allen, you want to join me up here?
Sure. And I'll make the motion that we accept the proclamation as read by the mayor.
Second. Now, a motion by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Sulfah for the approval of the proclamation for the city council commending the Batavia high school 2021 football team. Kirk, call the roll.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Saron.
Aye.
Vogelsinger.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rizzato.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Connolly.
Aye.
Chanzet.
Aye.
13, yes, no nos.
Thank you. All right.
And the voice of the Bulldogs is going to call the names out because I was pushing it off. Come on, give me a second. Yeah. Come on, I guess while I get the microphone here, I'll share just a little story of, I think, how this went for me. This was one of the games that I haven't brought, the last game of the season was the one that I hadn't, that I didn't get to broadcast this year. And over 15 years, let's probably count them on one, maybe two hands, the games that I haven't broadcast of the Batavia High School Bulldogs. So, from the field perspective, standing on the field and watching literally all hell break loose at the end of that game, all of you that were there and anybody that watched that knows that for sure, I was taken back by, I'll just say, number 27, all by himself, walking around on the field and searching out the reporters and just pretty much anybody he could talk to in a very calm, I'll say, as professional demeanor as I have ever seen on a high school football field, really showing how sometimes players, in the worst of circumstances, still show the best sportsmanship and the best things that I think everybody thinks about when we think about Batavia high schoolers. Whether they're in sports or anything else out there, I've always felt like every kid that I've ever seen out there acts with respect towards everybody else that's out on the field, no matter what the circumstance. So, that's just one that stands out in my mind from being there on the field and seeing that occur. So, I just think that, you know, every one of you should be proud of who you are, what you went through, and where you're going in your life. So, really want to say how proud that I was of all of you that night, but that's one that just sticks out in my mind. Okay.
Let me just say that hopefully these proclamations we are going to give you can be a document you can have for the rest of your life and be able to show your children and your grandchildren with great pride how good the city felt about you and your play and how you were continuing on a legacy that started 105 years ago at Batavia High School. And if you look at the people who were involved in that movement and some of the success of things that they did in their lives, you know, I'm really looking forward to seeing what happens with you guys, because I think there is phenomenal talent and opportunity here for Batavia to really sparkle and be extremely proud of. So, as the mayor, I'm standing here, very proud of this team and what you really brought to this community and the lessons that you showed the younger kids in this town of how to be a sportsman, how to really play the game, and developed this phenomenally winning record that has started at Batavia High School in the athletic department. So, you're really, really, really part, an important part of a very broad, proud tradition for Batavia to have, so thank you to each and one of you.
Okay, first up is Vincy Salano. [Applause]. You can stand up here. Yeah. Jalen Buckley. H.J. Sanders. Josh Stornick. Spencer Prats. Ryan Whitwell. Jack Stausky. Tyler Jancy. And Ryan Boe.
I'm going to have Coach Perron come up too, because I got a whole stack up here for you there.
And one more thing I wanted to say too, one of the final moments I had before the team left the field and we finally decided to leave was Dave and I were standing there at the end of the game, and I don't remember which player it was, walked up to probably an eight- or nine-year-old kid, walked past him, patted him on the back and said, "It's your turn now." And that's really what happens. It starts from BYF all the way through graduation with these kids, and they believe in everything they learn. And I'll let the coach take it from there. If you want to say anything, Dennis.
First of all, thank you. I think this is wonderful, as always. The street sign, I'll talk about that for a second. Yeah, sure. So, yeah, so, I don't know, I believe Haynes started, kind of started that with me, mayor, a number of years ago, and now being carried on by the street department. And it's kind of a, if you come to the games, you'll notice the home games, they're stacked all up behind our visitors' bench. We like to put the playoff signs back behind them as they walk in for them to see, and I think they're neat for our kids to see down the end zone and our fans to look at. It's a great point of pride and something, it's been a nice partnership with the city that we really are grateful for. And it's, I know the freshmen set those up before games, and it's a very cool thing. So, and being able to put conference champions on there, I think, is very, very special. So, that would be the first thing. Thank you for that. Thank you again always to fire police departments. Often with a lot of our sports programs, football included, very cool thing having the fire trucks and the police department either take you in or take you out of town. Not a lot of places do that anymore. And that's another example of what makes Batavia really great and a special place, and we're thankful for that. With the football part of it, I know that we're very proud of that, but as you know, our program, our kids, our parents always are extremely supportive of all the great charities in our community. I'll mention the Batavia Toy Drive that the Ballys are a really big part of. We've been a big sort of, I guess, we're the muscle behind organizations like that, but Bulldog Moving Company, which supports Chip In here in town, and probably another 40 or 50 charities and things we get involved with, that we don't really promote very much because it wouldn't be right, we just like to help. And so, I'm proud of these guys, because when I text and say, "Hey, captains, I need 20 guys for this," or "30 guys for this," or "Can we get the whole team at this thing?" And everybody shows up, you know, within an hour's notice, it's really pretty special. These are really the type of young men they are. The football stuff is great, and we enjoy it, it's fun, it's fun to do what we do, but I think the better part of it is these guys are Batavians and Bulldogs, and proud for the guys that have been here for most of their lives, the ones that have come recently, and the ones that have moved here as in the high school, I think they all enjoy being part of the culture around this community. It's a great, great place to live, a great place to raise a family, a great place to coach, a great place to go to school and play sports, and these guys are all great examples of that. They are our team captains, team captains this season, and our team captains for next year. So, if those were the guys that brought to represent the team, it would be hard to, right now in the environment, have everybody down here, because we'd have 100 guys in here. I didn't think we should do that, but, so they'll represent them well, we'll make sure that they receive those. I don't need to highlight much of the season because everybody's watched, but I will say something I'm very, very proud of is that we beat Geneva 11 years in a row, so let's hear it for that. Woo! And defensive players, I believe they have not scored a touchdown in five years. Yeah. Or a point, I just want you to be aware of that. We take incredible pride in that, so any Genovians that happen to be watching this tonight, sorry, we're not, we're going to try to keep that going, we're very proud of that. And one other small thing, we did win conference, and we were also undefeated. We beat the state champion, we beat North Falcons. in here, I didn't think we should do that, but, so they'll represent them well, we'll make sure that they receive those. I don't need to highlight much of the season because everybody's watched, but I will say something I'm very, very proud of is that we beat Geneva 11 years in a row, so let's hear it for that. And defensive players, I believe they have not scored a touchdown in five years.
Yeah.
Or a point, I just want you to be aware of that. We take incredible pride in that, so any Genovians that happen to be watching this tonight, sorry, we're not, we're going to try to keep that going, we're very proud of that. And one other small thing, we did win conference, where we were also undefeated. We beat the state champion, we beat North Falcons, we're exceptionally proud of that fact, beat another team in Glen Bar Dorth that gave the 8A team Lockport the best game they had in the entire playoffs. We're, obviously, we're all aware of the circumstances, there's probably not a time I'm at the Moose or the VFW or out at a restaurant, I talk to somebody who loves football, who says, "Hey, coach," and, you know, you know what they say next, and I say, "I'm grateful for that, but don't let us off the hook." I know, you know, what all of our hopes and dreams are every single year. I think what's most important from a competitive standpoint is that every year, these guys want to be able to truly say in earnest without bragging, "We believe we can be state champions." And to get to a point where you have young men and families in the community, in our community, believing that you could do that every year at a public school is pretty special. And I'm just honored to be part of it. I brought Coach Anderson with us. And I, "Come up here, Sean, you boy, come up, Sean, you know Coach Holm and you knew former coaches Gess, Baron, and Karen, Sean's the new guy." He's our offensive coordinator, you who might not know, and came along right when Coach Gessberry left us. Sean's someone I'm very, very proud to coach with, lucky that he came and moved to our community, has become part of our program. Coach Anderson is our offensive coordinator. We, we have a number of great guys too, but he, you know, again, history teacher, loves government, you know, so he needs to be here with me now. I'm glad that Sean's here and glad that he's here with our school, so I want to introduce him as well. But mainly, I want to say thank you, this is a great, a great town, proud to have lived here my whole life and hope to be here the rest of it. Thank you. Okay, right, sure. Yep. Thank you. Thank you.
Guys, act like you like each other.
Good job, guys.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Can I take this something?
Yeah, you know what? I'll give those to Sean. Thank you very much.
Sure thing. Here you go, Sean.
Thank you.
Good job, guys. Great job.
Thank you, boys.
Great job.
Thank you.
Congrats.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Hi, guys. Thank you.
Well, now we're back to a normal crowd in here. All right. Going then to item 11, do we have somebody from Main Street?
Yes, Bill McGrail and Beth Walker are online.
Go ahead.
Hi, I'll just start with a brief update of what's going on. We're, we're currently in the process of taking boardwalk shops applications until the end of the month. We've gotten quite a few, things are looking really good. We had two additional shops from the 2021 season, signed leases in downtown Batavia, that's Farm Dog Flowers, which is going at $239 at West Wilson, and Topola Manor, which will go at 10 East Wilson behind House of 423. So Bill is going to do our 2021 wrap-up, he's our vice president, and I'm going to send it over to him.
Thank you, Beth. Good evening, everybody. I'm Bill McGrail, I'm currently the vice president of the Board of Directors for Batavia Main Street, and we'll go through our 2021 wrap-up and then just a little look ahead to 2022. So Batavia Main Street is a nonprofit, community-based organization dedicated to enhancing downtown Batavia's identity as the heart of the community through volunteer efforts, and our vision is to help create a unique and vital downtown that enriches the business community, embraces history, celebrates the arts, preserves our natural environment, promotes the quality of events to instill a sense of place in our community. So who are we? First of all, I'd like to take this opportunity to give a big shout out and heartfelt thank you to our staff, led by Beth, our executive director, and Delaney and Kathy. They're all relatively new and, you know, going into 2021, very, very challenging year. We didn't know if we were going to have any events at all, and they really just, they took over and blew it away, and we ended up getting to do some events later on in the season. We're also really, really, really blessed to have a wide spread of talent with our Board of Directors. You can see the list here, but we have a lot of downtown business owners, property owners, residents, it's a really good group to, to lead this team. All right, so here's a snapshot at the upcoming 2022 budget. You see a breakdown, we get $40,000 from the city, $40,000 from the special service area, and then we also get $87,000 from sponsorship programs and fundraising, bringing our total amount to $167,000. Economic impact, so here's a little highlight of 2021, we had 19 businesses that opened, three retained, a net of 38 part-time jobs created, six full-time jobs, and 13,265 square feet filled. We wouldn't be the organization we were without our volunteers, and I want to highlight that this year, coming off like a down year with nothing, we weren't really sure who was going to come back, but we got some pretty good volunteer efforts going over 1,505 hours, which really helped, you know, with our cocktails in the park, block party, Bad Fest, and the events that happened later on in the year. So definitely couldn't do it, it really takes an army to put off, put on all the different happenings, so we're really proud and thankful for our volunteers. Highlight a couple of the successes, so farmer's market, that was able to pretty much go the full season, which we were very lucky. We were up five vendors from the average of 2020 to 45, and that included 60 rotating vendors and 20 of them which were new, and this is really, I'm sure you've all attended the farmer's market at some point, but it's really become one of the farmer's markets in the area. It's always buzzing and lots of variety and just something we're really, really proud of. Boardwalk shops, again, this probably had the worst timing ever for opening in, in May of 2020, but after two successful years now, two additional shops were added last year, so we have a total of 10. You can see the number there, 400, over $400,000 in sales, and six of last year's shops have now signed brick and mortar leases nearby areas. So really, probably the first event that we took post, I'd say post-pandemic, but we're still pretty much in it, we were really blessed by an evening of good weather, and I think generally people wanted to try to get out for some sense of normalcy, so we had over 550 people at 10 cocktails in the park, which really helped exceed, this is our big fundraiser, this is the one that helps really put money in Main Street's budget, and it was a wonderful evening for everybody that attended, and like I said, we were very blessed by the weather, it was a beautiful summer night. All right, so looking into 2022, we've got action plans to host over 67 events and happenings, as well as another full season of boardwalk shops, and some highlights of returning events. April 16th, Egg Hop will, will grace the, the streets and the parks again of downtown Batavia, and also will be happy to announce that plans are underway to bring back the dinner table. It's been two years since we've been able to attempt this, but August 7th is the plan to, to reignite the dinner table. And as well as our regular list of events, you can take a look down here, we'll be looking forward to. So I'd like to thank you for your time, and open up if you have any questions, to myself or Beth. Thank you.
Any questions? Just as on behalf of the city, thank Main Street for its ongoing cooperation and for your innovative ideas that you continuously bring in, for new ways to kind of boast Batavia, and I'm very proud of what you're doing. I've, I've had several other mayors in the region ask me to come down and let them take a, go on a tour of downtown Batavia because of things they've heard about, what's going on with Main Street and their chamber and others, and so we're kind of looking like we're the regional model for, you know, a town coming together and doing stuff that makes it look good and is proud of its businesses and how we do it, so thank Main Street for your role in that.
Thank you.
Okay, moving to 12, which is approval of a Class B 5 package liquor license application for 7-Eleven at 336 East Wilson Street in Batavia. Who's got this one?
Yes, I have this one.
Alderman Rizado?
Yes. This application was for a Class 5B liquor license due to a change in ownership. It was discussed and approved during the committee of the hall meeting on 111, and I don't know, see if anybody here from 7-Eleven? Nobody's here?
Sorry, Alderman Rizado, I'm going to step out for this discussion.
Okay. All right. If there's nothing to discuss, I would make a motion that we approve Class B 5 package liquor license application for 7-Eleven, Inc., DBA 711-33874H, at 336 East Wilson Street.
Second. Moved by Alderman Rizado, second by Alderman Soufa, for the approval of the Class B package liquor license for 7-Eleven at 336 East Wilson Street. Any discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Rizado.
Aye.
Beck. Apologies. Connolly.
Aye.
Chanet.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Soufa.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Saron.
Aye.
Vocal singer.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
That's 12 yes, no nos, two absent, Your Honor.
Motion's approved by a vote of 12 yes, two absent, no nos. Okay, moving to 13, which is ordinance 22-01, establishing special service area number 68 for the Avenue Marketplace and Raising Cane. Alderman?
I've got that. I've got.
Oh, you got it?
Yep. Thank you. This is the backup special service area for the Avenue Marketplace and Raising Cane's property. Went through the public hearings and everything, and at this point, really don't have anything to present additionally to that. This would be a backup for ensuring the common facilities at those two facilities there, that would be a backup special service area to take care of those if they do not take care of themselves. If there's no questions or comments or anything on that, I'll make the motion that we approve ordinance 22-01, establishing special service area number 68 for Avenue Marketplace and Raising Cane's.
Second. Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Soufa, for the approval of ordinance 23-01, special service area number 68 for the Avenue Marketplace and Raising Cane. Any further discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Alderman Beck, have you returned to the meeting?
I have, thank you.
Wolf.
Aye.
Soufa.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Saron.
Aye.
Vocal singer.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
That's 12 yes, no nos, one absent, Your Honor.
Motion's approved, 13 yes, no nos, one absent. Okay, moving to 14, ordinance 22-02, establishing special service area number 42 for the Nago Industrial Park, PUD, Farmstead 3 Development. Alderman Wolf?
Yes, thank you. This is the backup special service area number 42 for Nago Industrial, Farmstead 3 Development. This would be initially assessed at $0, and then, once we know what the cost is, we anticipate that to be about, a levy of about $4,050, which should be around 10 cents per hundred of the AV, that'll be on that. So we're, we're going to go in and the levy will be assessed, a higher or lower rate to cover about 45% of the costs, and it would be a maximum levy of 30 cents. If there's no questions, I'll make the motion that we approve ordinance 22-02, establishing special service area number 42 for the Nago Industrial Park, PUD, Farmstead 3 Development.
Second. Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Soufa, for the approval of ordinance 22-02 for the, or 22-02 for the service area number 42 in the Nago Industrial Park. Any further comments on that one? Kirk call the roll.
Wolf.
Aye.
Soufa.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Saron.
Aye.
Vocal singer.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rizado.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Connolly.
Aye.
Chanet.
Aye.
Thirteen yes, no nos, one absent.
Very good, thank you. Motion's approved. All right, moving to 15, which is authorizing execution of an annexation agreement by and among the city of Batavia and Stephen Joseph Lamell for property located in the southern terminus of Evergreen Drive. Alderman Wolf?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. This is the, at the end of Evergreen Drive, basically a forest right now. This is an approval for one house to be built, attached to city utilities, and then any of the other lots that would be within that development area that's being annexed, those would be, we'd reopen and amend the agreement to add those other properties as they are developed.
And with the understanding that at the end of the day, these all will be under city utilities and...
Yes, all of them would be, correct.
The street will be the city standard and everything else.
Correct.
Allowing him to sell one house to kind of get himself set up in this.
Yes, that, that's how this is set up, is to basically build the one house and then build successive ones after that. And that's all covered in the agreement.
Right. I think our development department did a very nice job with putting this document together.
Yes.
Any further discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Wolf.
Aye.
Soufa.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malay.
Aye.
Saron.
Aye.
Vocal singer.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rizado.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Connolly.
Aye.
Chanet.
Aye.
Thirteen yes, no nos, one absent.
Motion's approved. Moving then to item number 16, which is resolution 22-003-R, authorizing contract with the National Research Center for the National Community Survey for the city of Batavia. Who's got this one?
I do, Your Honor.
Go ahead.
So the city, several years back, had discussed having a standardized test to get some information, a community survey. We decided we were going to revisit with the same types of questions to get some standard types of answers and be able to track things as, as time went on. As we discussed in committee, we might not be interested in doing the test quite as, as quickly.
successive ones after that. And that's all covered in the agreement.
Right. I think our development department did a very nice job with putting this document together.
Yes.
Any further discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Need a motion?
I'll make the motion that we approve ordinance 22-03, authorizing execution and annexation agreement by and among the city of Batavia and Stephen Joseph Lamell for the property located at the southern terminus of Evergreen Drive.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Rosado for the approval of ordinance 22-03. Any further discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Wolf.
Aye.
Soffa.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malay.
Uer. Aye.
Saron.
Aye.
Vocal singer.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Connolly.
Aye.
Chanzet.
Aye.
13 yes, no nos, one absent.
Motion's approved. Moving then to item number 16, which is resolution 22-003-R, authorizing contract with the National Research Center for the National Community Survey for the city of Batavia. Who's got this one?
I do, Your Honor.
Go ahead.
So the city several years back had discussed having a standardized test to get some information of community survey. We decided we were going to revisit with the same types of questions to get some standard types of answers and be able to track things as time went on. As we discussed in committee, we might not be interested in doing the test quite as quickly. And if I remember correctly, Laura, we were asking for permission to extend the contract to the end of the year, is that correct?
That is correct. And so if we are just going to think we're going to do the survey before the ends of the year, then we could sign this contract for this pricing. But if we're going to do the survey in next year, then we will be subject to the new pricing and don't need to enter into this agreement until the end of this year or early next year. The year in which the survey is conducted with the public is what determines what year your, the cost of it is. So if we wanted to move our survey to doing it once every three years, the suggestion from Griffin was to wait until next year to make this contract, because it is good to do the survey at the exact same time of year as well for comparison's sake.
Yeah, and I think when I read that, I really feel like as long as it's before we go through and revamp our, you know, readjust our.
Strategic plan?
Then that is the right time to do it, you know, especially if we're trying to do it at the same time to get the same comparable information, do it at the same time of year, not do one time in the spring and then one time in, you know, the fall or the winter.
Mm-hmm.
So I think I'm fine with it being on a three-year cycle, doing it next spring.
Very good.
I don't know what everybody says online, but I can't see them tonight until we get the screen up there.
We do not have any hands up.
Okay.
So I will not be making a motion.
What was that, Dan?
I will not be making a motion then.
Right. Then are there any formal action that needs to be taken?
Yeah.
Okay, very good.
And then we can just bring that back to a council meeting prior to when we want to do that.
Right.
So that way we can get a, and be able to talk about what that's going to be in the budget or get an idea of what we need to have in the budget for next year when we roll this amount into next year's budget with whatever increase that's going to be.
Right.
Okay.
I just want to point out that I do appreciate staff's negotiations in good faith regarding this contract. You guys put together a great proposal again, and I also appreciate you adding the Spanish part to be more inclusive of the community.
Thank you.
Can I, just a question on that, because Laura, you were talking about the possibility of starting the planning process in the fall. Will we just readdress this with them in the fall so that we'd be ready to have? I don't remember when we did the survey last time, to be honest. So do you need to prepare at the end of this year to be ready to roll it out at the same time it was last, first time?
No, I think that as long as we have things sufficiently in place to, we talked about doing, sending this out to the public in January of 2023, I think we'll receive the results in sufficient time for our mid-year discussions to update the strategic plan.
Okay, I just wasn't sure if you guys needed to prepare anything prior. Like I thought you said it would take a couple of months.
If we do.
So that way we'd still be signing a contract at the end of this year.
Mm-hmm, exactly.
Okay.
I think we may be signing a contract at the end of this year to do the survey next year.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's what I thought. We do have Alderman Malay line.
Oh, great.
Oh, he's here.
Yes, I just want to acknowledge that I'm here. Just got done with my work.
Thank you, Alderman. You missed a lot of excitement.
Yeah, missed all the fun at the beginning of the meeting.
It's a watch.
So we're not going to take action then, is that?
Right.
Okay. Moving then to 17, which is resolution 22-011-R, approval of agreement between the city of Batavia and the Illinois Fraternal Order of Police for the patrol officers of Lodge 224 for January 1st, 2022 through December 31st of 2024. Who's got this one?
Your Honor, I do.
Alderman Chanzet.
So the collective bargaining agreement did expire in December. As we discussed in committee, staff was able to have good faith bargaining between the two parties and brought forth a new three-year agreement. We did get a notice that the patrol union has ratified the tentative agreement first week of January. We discussed the highlights of the new agreement in committee. I do want to point out that qualified immunity was something that did come up, so there is a side letter regarding that, basically stating that the parties are agreeing that if the state or the feds decide to come up with some language and past laws regarding qualified immunity, that it would be an opportunity for the parties to discuss. If Wendy's here, did I leave anything critical out?
No, I think you've got it, thank you.
If there is no discussion, I would move that we approve this agreement between the city of Batavia and the Illinois Fraternal Order of Police Patrol Officers Lodge 224 for a three-year agreement.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Chanzet, second by Alderman Soffa for the approval of resolution 22-011-R, the approval of agreement between the city of Batavia and the Illinois Fraternal Order of Police Patrol Officers of Lodge 224 from January 1st, 2022 through December 31st of 2024. Any further discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Chanzet.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Soffa.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malay.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Saron.
Aye.
Vocal singer.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Connolly.
Aye.
14 yes, no nos, and no absent.
Motion is 12 yes, did you say?
14.
14 yes, no, none absent. Okay, very good. Moving then to 18, Administrator's Report.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have planned our winter community engagement meetings for the update of our walking and biking plan. They will be virtual due to the current COVID outbreak, so they will be scheduled for February 23rd, and we'll be hosting two meetings. Hopefully, one of those times will be convenient for everyone. The first meeting will be from 11:00 AM to 12:30 PM, and the other will be from 7:00 PM to 8:30 PM. And there also, our survey on the, on biking and walking in Batavia is still open. You can go to the city's website at cityofbatavia.net, and right on the homepage, there is a link to take the survey, and we would really love your input, both on the survey questions, but there's also an interactive map that allows you to point out areas where maybe transportation is easy versus where it is more difficult, and we will be using those, the information that's collected to formulate recommendations that we will prioritize in the plan. And let's see, finance has been very busy in their department, working on closing out the year end, as well as preparing for audit activities. And community develop continues to receive additional requests for permits. We're working on RFPs for marketing our downtown properties for redevelopment, as well as discussing about downtown planning. Utility work continues on the Avenue Marketplace development, and once they have the gravel access road in place, then you'll start to see the building envelopes appear there as well, because both Chipotle and Starbucks are very anxious to open as soon as possible this year. And the Plan Commission, on January 19th, will have their regular meeting, and will be discussing a request for an electronic message center signed that's going to be part of the Douglas Flooring Building at 490 North Randall Road, and that's the same shopping center where the Culvers is coming. And then on January 25th, at the committee of the whole, there'll be several community development items on that agenda, including a future discussion about our island annexations and how to continue forward with those, a transfer of the bike path north of Gore Street to the Batavia Park District, vacation of excess row on Blue Bell Lane, and another discussion in regard to parking requirements. And the proposed Culvers Restaurant, the 400 block of North Randall Road, is under zoning review. The planned public hearing with the Plan Commission will be in February. And we have a lot of other projects that are in various stages of review. In Public Works, we are working to revise and update the city's net metering ordinance as required by the new state energy legislation. We attended some seminars and have some sample ordinances that we need to modify for the city's purposes and then bring to you for your decision as to how we want to move forward with those. And then engineering plans for North River Street One Way Conversion Project are currently awaiting IDOT's review and approval, and it's anticipated that we will let the project for bid in early February so that we have all the information as we bring that back to you to determine what the timing will be for moving forward. And that's all that I have, unless anybody has any questions for me.
Any questions for her? Well, thank you very much. Okay, committee reports, community development, Alderman Wolf?
No report, Laura, went over what we've got coming up on the next council meeting, but quite a few items to talk about at the next meeting.
Right. Public Utilities, we have any report for them?
No report, Your Honor.
Governmental Services?
No reports, Your Honor.
Public Safety?
No report, Your Honor.
Okay. We have other business from the council?
I have one, Your Honor.
Go ahead.
Had some contact about the one and only time we've had really any snow and blowing at all. Millview, I know in years past, several different times out along the high school section there and along the park, there's been a snow fence along the Mooseheart side, and I don't know, I don't know if Gary's online, if that's something that we had asked for or something that they just did. But I noticed, you know, in the pictures that were sent to me, that the, the reality without a snow fence out there, and not that we've had a lot of snow in the past couple of years, but that was really almost impassable, just looking at the pictures that were sent to me, what that was like for that part of that storm. So I'm sure it was fine after we went out and plowed it, but the way it was blowing through there was just kind of crazy looking. So I'm not sure if we had ever asked for a snow fence for Mooseheart, or if they just did that on their own out there.
Yeah, I'm never aware of a snow fence conversation related to Millview.
Okay.
So I don't know who's done in the past. I, I never heard that one.
Right, I mean, I remember a long years ago, they, of course, used to be along Randall Road in different spots, but we.
Yeah, I know there's a stretch along Orchard, but no, Millview's not one that I was even aware of, so I don't know who, who had been putting that up over the years.
Okay. Yeah, and I don't, I don't know that we've ever experienced enough of a problem out there for us to try to do something with that, because it's maybe been once or twice that I can think of in the last decade that there's been enough snow to be any kind of an issue for us.
Alderman Lehman has a hand up.
Perfect weather conditions with the wind blowing in the right direction to cause the problem.
Alderman Lehman?
Who?
Alderman Lehman?
Thank you. Well, first of all, I do want to say that even though I know that the virtual, there were complications with hosting virtually tonight, but I appreciate it because I had a significant COVID exposure on Sunday, and so did not want to expose all of you guys tonight, so I just am thankful to be here this way. But I also wanted to mention that I just appreciated the Batavia Main Street presentation. I didn't get a chance to say it earlier, and just seeing how much that Batavia Main Street does for our town and all those small businesses, and just seeing how successful they've been these last few years is very exciting. So I'm really excited to see how, once we're fully past COVID, just to see our downtown businesses just explode, so I think we have some cool things to see, so.
Definitely. And Alderman Saron?
Alderman Saron?
You might be on mute, Nick.
I see, I'm having issues tonight. I tried to raise my hand earlier when the football team was there, but, but couldn't get it raised before the Main Street minute started. I wanted to point out something, the mayor has a gift of tying a lot of major events and history back to Batavia, and I wanted to bring up the fact that while, while our team had a, had a great season, fell, fell short of the state championship. The team that did win the state championship this year was Wheaton North, and the coach of that team is a Batavia resident. He lives a few doors from me, so congratulations to Joe Wardinsky and the Wheaton North team. But I'd be remiss without mentioning that they've, Wheaton North fell short of a perfect season because they had one loss this year, and it was in overtime to the Batavia Bulldogs. So wanted to point both a positive and a congratulate the Wheaton North Falcons on their state championship.
Thank you for that insight, very good. Okay, quickly, under the mayor's report, I have a regretful announcement to make. I was told this morning that last night Floyd Fitch passed away. Floyd Fitch had served as Batavia, on the Batavia Fire Department for, I believe, well over 40 years, and he retired as the assistant chief. He, for many years, ran a pattern shop up on the East Wilson Street Hill in the alley there, in some of the area that's now part of the so-called Shodine property. And Floyd was, worked very near the fire station, so when the whistle would blow, he could generally be about the second or third guy at the station. And then for many years, he was also the assistant chief, but his real, he got to go to a lot of things because he was the next-door neighbor to Fire Chief Richter. And so anytime there was a fire 24 hours a day, Richter would yell out the window at his house to Floyd to get out of bed and get, come on down and go with him to wherever they were going to go. And Floyd had some interesting moments and some really interesting stories to tell about being a member of the Batavia Fire Department. So he's one of those people who really did rise to the occasion and made this world a safer place for us to live in, and got a lot of fires put out under, with his assistance and leadership. I just wanted to make a moment of thanks and appreciation to him for a life that really did make a, a true difference for the good and the life of Batavia. The other thing I just want to briefly share, I had the opportunity to talk with the police administration today on a variety of subjects, but one of the things that is an ongoing issue with us is the amount of crime that is occurring to Batavia residents over the internet. We are getting, you know, I think there, there's a sighting on Batavia because we have this large complex of senior citizens. We now have six senior living communities in Batavia, and it seems like that's a target market, market, I guess I would describe them, of folks that can easily be encouraged to buy into something or send in a coupon or give us your credit card number or whatever the issue may be. And we're spending a lot of police time now dealing with crime on the internet. So I just wanted to warn everybody in town, please be very careful when you get something sent to you on the internet and somehow or another it evolves into, well, it's going to cost you $20 to us to mail this to you, or we need your credit card number to solidify what it is that we're buying here, or we'll charge your debit card or your credit card or whatever. And then in some instances, they've taken the credit card numbers and gone out and literally spent thousands of dollars off that credit card before the Batavia police get involved in it. Many times our guys have been able, our guys and gals have been able to kind of stop that and turn that around so the people, at the end of the day, didn't get their credit card dissolved into this sale. But there's a lot of that shenanigan going on now, and I just wanted to encourage all Batavians to be very cautious when you're trying to buy something over the, online on, on the internet, or somebody's calling you up and saying, hey, go on the computer and look at this website. We had one just here in the office today where our email was sent, and we took it to the, our tech staff, and they were able to decipher it in about two minutes that it was a shenanigan because they waved the bar in someplace, and all of a sudden, all these strange addresses popped up. And so Howard said, whatever we do, don't go any further with this, just shut it down, and we'll go on to the next one and put the word out to the staff that there's somebody nosing around here trying to, to get us to do something. So just be cautious. So I thank you all for your participation tonight. I felt bad at the beginning of this meeting, the way it had to come together, but I thought we kind of brightened it up and really stood very proud as a community when we did do the honoring of the football team, because they really are a great group of young gentlemen that really do deserve to be noted with appreciation for what they have done and how they conduct themselves and how they represent Batavia in such a positive fashion. themselves, and how they represent Batavia in such a positive fashion. And as a community, and as a town, and as a city council, we should be enormously proud of them. And I know we have a number of our senior citizen residents who live in town, and never have lived here before, but they've come in in the last few years, and they're living in one of our senior living communities. And one of the things they have become is a big fan club of Alan Wolf and his friend, Mr. Lundberg, in their broadcasting of Batavia High School games. And when the games haven't been on, I, the mayor's been hearing a lot about that from people wanting to know why these games aren't on the TV anymore. And I've talked to my friends at the school board about, you know, I think you would be, you really do something pretty bright if you put those games back on the air, because there's a lot of people that are yanking about why those games aren't on the air. So, I just wanted to throw that out there for everybody to hear me say it, that I think we need to get this thing, we got a lot to be proud of and to show off and to follow and cheer on and whatever, and we need to do everything we can in this town to do that. So, I'm just, that's my two cents on that one. So, with that, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So, moved.
Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Solfah, take a voice vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.[1790.58]